Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, November 27th, meeting of the Groton Town Council Committee of the Whole. All councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Parker, and I believe she's in attendance at another meeting on behalf of the council, so she should be arriving. Calendar and Communications, Councilor Baumgartner.
Nothing to report, hope everyone had a good day.
Thank you.
Councilor Franco.
I attended the RTM meeting and beautification committee meeting.
Councilor Heed.
Great turkey.
Councilor Atwater.
Oh, I attended the things of heritage meeting, and I just wanted to make it known that the Speaker of the House, Joa Simowicz, announced that the Blue Ribbon Panel on Tourism is going to have its first meeting on December 5th at 10:00 a.m. at the Legislative Office Building in Hartford.
I sat next to Rita tonight, and I liked her very much, but otherwise I didn't do much this year.
Thank you. I attended the RTM meeting as well, I had a meeting with City Mayor Hedrick, just as our regular point of coordination and communication between us, and I attended a meeting with Representative Conley and the manager to convey legislative priorities that the rest of the councilors forwarded along. Approval of minutes, Councilor Baumgartner.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Town Council Committee of the Whole meeting of November 13th, 2018, are hereby accepted and approved, so moved.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Heed. Any discussion of the minutes? Councilor Atwater.
On page seven, the last paragraph, it says that involvement is offered by O-N-G, and shouldn't it be O-And-G?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Anything else? If there are minor typos, you can relay those to the manager to be adjusted. Anything else? Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of acceptance of the minutes of the November 13th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously, eight, zero, zero. We are on to new business. 5A, 2018-521, Approval of Procurement Policy and Procedures, this is on page 19. Councilor Franco.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve the procurement policy and procedures for compliance with the Uniform Guidance Procurement Standards issued by the Office of Management and Budget, ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Baumgartner.
Hello. Good evening. I'd like to introduce you to Eileen Cardello, who is our purchasing agent for the town of Groton, I don't think that she's met before, or come before this new council yet.
Hello.
Hi.
You have in your packet some information that Eileen has put together as a comparison, but just to give you a little bit of background, this is really for auditing compliance. The Office of Management and Budget had a circular called A133 that auditors use to audit the town's records for any federal funding that we received. And recently, in the last couple of years, they have created a new document called this Uniform Guidance. And what that, it changed the procurement requirements related to anything that you purchase with federal grants. But one of the requirements is that we have a detailed policy and procedures that basically says we will adhere with all of the requirements of the Uniform Guidance document. So we will be putting this, it will become part of the purchasing manual at a later date, we are revising that, but because this was, it's effective in this fiscal year, so it was really effective July 1, 18, we need to have it on record so that when we do the 19 audit, that we are in compliance.
Very good. I just had a question, when we're looking at the table, it's multiple pages here, are the yellow boxes the changes that were made, or additions, or, I wasn't sure what the yellow indicated?
It was just things that I reflected to our current procedures now, where I updated it, comparing to what the federal requirements are.
So it was just your color coding?
Yeah.
It didn't really?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilor Ober. .
Yeah, I had a question on, I guess it's 20319B, the top of page 22. I know what it says, but I'm wondering if maybe it could be said a little differently or something. I didn't really like the part where it says the town is generally prohibited from using local vendor preference. You know, and everything that we're doing with the contractors and so forth, now we're talking about them using people from Groton, and that's almost a little bit of a, no, I don't want to use, I don't know the right word to use, so I won't use any.
Let her answer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're not prohibited from using local vendors, it's just that we don't have a policy in place for a preference. Some cities and towns do, where they say that, you know, if we go out to bid for something and a local vendor comes in higher, as long as it's within a certain percentage, we'll award to them. Groton doesn't have that, where we do business with many local vendors, so we're not, you know, eliminating local vendors' use at all.
May I ask another question?
May, please.
I appreciate that answer, it's very clear. I'm wondering if maybe we should review this, and maybe we would want to have some guidelines so that we do encourage a continuation of what you're doing, but maybe, like you said, have something where if somebody in Groton came in just a little bit higher, since they are a local person, we might try to work with them. Would that be something that we could put up, put forward to, John's sleeping.
No, we could certainly, we could certainly look at it, we just would want to really analyze what the, probably what the implications cost-wise would be, but certainly something we can look at.
Yeah, I would expect probably we could get some from other towns to use as a guide, but I really think that needs a little bit more.
Okay, we have other councilors, Councilor Schmidt and then Heed.
It's my understanding from reading this that this only applies to federal grant monies that we're using, it doesn't apply to anything else if the town does.
That's correct. Councilor Heed.
Okay, follow on what Mia was saying, I believe some of the local vendor, I don't know what you would call it, policies would be if they make a bid and somebody comes in lower, that they're given the option to match or beat that bid. I don't know if that's something that could be considered, but my, sorry?
I'm sorry, usually in public procurement, you don't allow people to match, but, you know, we'd have to look at how other cities and towns approach this and analyze it.
All right, the second question is just kind of a general question. Who enforces this? This is a policy that you follow, it isn't necessarily a policy that every department has to follow, or the council has to check in on, you kind of think?
It's, there are guidelines that the procurement department follows, and we do training and we enforce this within our departments at the town. So every department is supposed to follow the procurement policy.
But ultimately, it comes to your department, and you're doing?
Yes, I oversee it.
So you're the one who oversees it?
Right, I'm the procurement police.
Like Truman stops at this desk.
Mr. Burton and Councilors of Perry.
I'll reach out to CCM on the local vendor bid break and see if they have any kind of record, I'm hoping maybe they've compiled what other towns have done, so I'll check with them first. Like where I came from, we gave a 5% local bid break.
Great.
It's pretty common to have something around that range.
Thank you.
Councilors of Perry.
What we have here is a spreadsheet comparing what is recommended by OMB and what we're doing. We don't have a finished policy, are you going to produce a status policy and show it to us at a later time?
We plan on putting it in our purchasing manual, which is approved by the council.
Okay, but you're not going to put it in this form, are you?
We may use this as an exhibit in the policy, in the manual, just because this is what the federal government is saying that we have to do.
Are we going to see the manual as you finally print it and publish it?
Yes.
Because this isn't the finished product, is it?
No.
Thank you.
Anything else on 2018-521? Seeing none, we are at nine, councilors now, seeing none, all those in favor of 2018-521 Approval of Procurement Policy and Procedures, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry?
I don't think we should vote on this until we have some more information.
Okay, I called for a vote, so we need to vote, if you'd like to abstain, you can. This is cow, so this is just going to be going to town council, so we will have a chance at the town council to revisit it.
And just to point out that this is really just changing the part on federal grants, which we're required to do, we can update the town portion at any point, it's really a separate issue. We won't be able to touch the federal part, we have to keep it as they require it.
And as Director Landry said, this was supposed to have been in, it's effective July 1st, so we need to, we need to have this in place, and then we can adjust as needed.
It is a compliance, the auditors will be looking that we have approved such this, a document such as this, to be in compliance with Uniform Guidance, so we don't have a finding when they audit for 19, that we're not in compliance.
So there is a motion, I'm calling for the vote on this, so all those in favor of 2018-521, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstention, so eight, zero, and one abstention, Councilor Ober. Thank you. 5B, on page 27, this is Councilor Heed. Thank you, Ms. Landry, Ms. Cardello.
I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution to authorize the town manager to grant senior center staff to apply for an NRPA Training Grant in the amount of $1,350, ISO move.
Second. Moved by Heed and seconded by Parker, and this is item 2018-506, National Recreation and Parks Grant. Ms. Riley is with us this evening, hello.
Hello, how is everybody?
Fine, thank you for coming out.
Thank you. The NRPA grant is a training grant for instructors, and they will also supply the program materials for us, it doesn't pay for the instructor time, but the training is very costly, it's $700. This program fit and strong is an evidence-based program, and it focuses on people with mobility issues, so if they have arthritis, or hip or knee replacement, or problems standing or sitting, this will help move them to the next level of fitness, so then they can start to focus on walking and being able to be independent. The program will also be open to the public, not just for seniors.
I had a question in the last paragraph of the background, it indicates the plan to continue the programs to seek additional funding, what will be the source of the additional funding?
We usually go to, we usually charge a nominal fee that will cover instructor costs, and we also look at some of the bank grants to also fund the program.
So not necessarily out of your Parks and Rec account?
No.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the council? Councilor Ober.
I just want to say, if you can do all that you're saying here with this amount of money, I think we should put you in town, in charge of the town, nice job.
Thank you. We have someone doing that job already.
Sorry, John, sorry.
Is there anything else? Councilor Heed.
Just like to note, I think it's great that you're able to host a program at the senior center that isn't just for seniors, so it's for 18 and over, and I'd like to encourage you to promote that, I'm sure you will, but just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on 2018-506, National Recreation and Parks Grant, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. We are on to 2018-528, Federal Transit Administration, Section 5310, Program Grant for the Senior Center, you're staying with us for this one as well. Councilor Ober, please, on page 32, I believe.
Motion to recommend a resolution approving that the town manager may execute all such reports and certifications as made herein after, required as a condition of receiving such capital assistance grants, ISO move.
Second. Moved by Ober, seconded by Atwater. Is there anything you'd like to add?
This is the grant we applied for last March, that pays 80% of a replacement vehicle that would have been replaced by the town anyway, so we cover 80% of the costs through this grant.
Any questions from Ms. Riley on the grant? Councilor Schmidt.
I just wondered why it took so long to realize that the motion in February was inadequate.
Probably my error, but, yeah, we did receive the grant, we just received the paperwork from the state, so that brought it to light.
Thank you. Councilor Heed.
What's the full cost of the van?
Off the top of my head, it's about $64,000, and I think our grant will be around $48,000. We have two vehicles currently that were replaced on the 5310 grant.
I just want to offer a suggestion again, if we're going to have a new van, perhaps we could offer the old van for use by the heritage park to ferry people back and forth up to Fort Griswold, if that's possible, I know the one, what was it, the Ardon-Groton Bank, they had a, they had one of the vans running, and it was nice because you could get off right at the Bill Library, at the Ford area, and then go back down to the water taxi, so, I don't know if that's something that's possible or not, but that's something that I'm keenly interested in.
I'll drive it.
You'll drive it?
I'll drive it.
There you go.
Oh, wow.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of 2018-528, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Riley.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, Mr. Bronck is here, and Mr. Bronck is going to come up and give us a bit of information before we move to our next item. And I would ask the councilors, due to the nature of the topics that Mr. Bronck will be addressing, that we hold our questions until we are in executive session, please. Mr. Reiner is here as well. Thank you, gentlemen. Is Ms. Cullen going to come up as well?
We brought the whole team.
And I don't know the other gentleman, I apologize.
David Kors.
David Kors?
Yeah, Deputy Commissioner from the State Department of Economic and Community Development.
Thank you very much, sir.
And Susan Cullen as well, you've met her before.
Yes.
So I understand we're going to provide a generic overview regarding the process that we've taken to date regarding Mystic Education Center. We basically treat the project like a redevelopment project versus a real estate transaction. Clearly, it is state property, it's roughly 77 acres in size, and the state does bifurcate the property, although in our records it shows that the state owns it, roughly half of the property is managed by DEEP, and the upland portion is managed by DECD. It's that upland portion that we're focused on mainly as a developable area. The process that we used was to partner with the state, that collaboration came about quite nicely, and they have a vested interest in actually seeing the property developed. We have a vested interest as the town in seeing the property developed. We laid out a process to DECD, which they supported, and ultimately involved doing a lot of marketing, a lot of showings of the property, reaching out to the development community, and ultimately issuing an RFP, which we did. We did receive several responses, all of them were qualified, and it was a challenge to go through, it's quite a process, several interviews, also some written Q and A, and we got to a certain point where the panel is prepared to basically make a recommendation. Moving forward, I can defer to David at that point, but moving forward, the state will make the ultimate decision and handle the disposition of the property. I think in executive session, we're willing to share more details.
Thank you. Mr. Reiner or Ms. Cullen, Ms. Corn? No?
I think for now, until we go into executive session.
All right, very good. Mr. Burton, is there anything else that you wanted to do before we moved for executive session?
No.
Okay, would you, please?
I hereby move that the members of the Town Council Committee of the Whole, Town Manager John Burt, Manager of Economic and Community Development Paige Bronck, Planning and Development Services Director John Reiner, Planner Two Susan Cullen, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services Deb Jones, Parks and Recreation Director Mark Berry, and Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development Deputy Commissioner David Kors, go into executive session pursuant to General Statute, Section 1-260, for the purpose of discussing the lease, sale, or purchase of real estate concerning the Mystic Education Center property, ISO move.
Second. Moved by Heed and seconded by Parker. All those in favor of going into executive session for item 5D, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? We are in, we are recessed to go into executive session at 6:57. Okay. Okay, we are back from recess, and it is 8:13, and we are on to item 5E, 2018-522, and this is on page 33. And whose turn is it? Well, we may not need any formal action on this one, let's see, no, no, oh yeah, no, there is.
There is a motion.
There is. Atwater?
Yes.
Please.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution to accept the Wayfinding Master Plan 2018.
Is there a second?
I so move, second.
Moved by Atwater and seconded by Heed. Now, Mr. Bronck, thank you.
Just a quick introduction, Randy Collins from the Beta Group is the firm that Groton had selected to help us with this process and to develop the Wayfinding Master Plan, also joined by Susan Cullen and John Reiner. Just a little bit of backdrop, we always talk about the market analysis, that's kind of the beginning of where a lot of these ideas start from. We talk about branding and identity, and trying to build quality of life and sense of place within Groton, and when people travel outside of Groton, and you go to many communities, you'll find that you're immediately impressed with significant signage when you arrive at a destination, and more than just simply providing a direction or an identity, the signage gives an immediate impression as to what that community is like. If there's a very colorful sign that's well-designed, with landscaping, et cetera, you get a great impression about that community, and it's probably more subconscious than anything. So in looking at the signage around Groton, we identified that as a need, something that we needed to work on. So I think I'll turn it over at this point to Randy, he's going to walk through the process we went through, the logic, some of the design options, and illustrate how we plan, how we plan on making some improvements throughout Groton. It's not just one area, it's not just Mystic, it's not just over by the water, by the city, the subbase, it's really how we're going to address signage community-wide.
Thank you, Paige. So what I'd like to do is walk you through the plan, but first touch on the goals, as Paige outlined, the wayfinding system is a signage system for the entire community of Groton, but it's meant to be a directional signage that primarily would be used for visitors, but also for the residents of Groton as well. And it's meant to provide a unified signage system so that it reflects a community identity, but it also is part of a system that gets you off of, say, the freeway and gets you to a destination, and I'm going to walk you through an example of that towards the end of the presentation. So there's a number of current logos in town, you have the town seal, you have the Groton with the four icons, and some of that was what helped to inform the development of the logo that we designed for this project. As part of the team getting together with the three of these folks, we went through an exercise of a number of different design options for wayfinding, and finally settled on one, and it basically looks like this, it's Explore More with a stylized compass rose, and you'll notice that in the compass rose, the colors that it is made up of can hearken back to the colors in the, I'm pointing to the screen when you're all looking over there, is the colors of the logo on the right-hand side. So there's, every part of the sign is part of the identity of the sign that's unique to Groton, so the color that's selected for the sign face, the bottom border, orange stripe, the Explore More, the stylized compass rose, all work together to be that identities. And different from signage's, signage systems that are meant for pedestrians, it's something that is tailored mostly to an automobile traveler, so if you're driving down the road, whether you're doing 25 miles an hour or 35 miles an hour, it's got to be something that catches your eye, something that you then get a sense that needs to be repeated so that you have a sense of anticipation, and it then is, creates a feeling that is part of a holistic system, it's part of an overarching system, so that you start to get, as a visitor, trained to look for those signs to make your way around the community. So you'll notice, and I'll get into this in a second, that we use the, these logos interchangeably, depending on the size of the sign, the sign type, but one of the unique things about this project is you have Mystic, which straddles two communities, and so we wanted to develop a identifiable aspect would go on the backside of the sign, so the backsides have a sense that relates to Groton as well. As Paige said, the system is really meant to be for the entire system, excuse me, the entire community. Along the top, you'll see that the red squares are really a gateway sign for the more secondary and tertiary roads coming into the community, and then we have a number of different directional signs, welcome to signs and pedestrian signs, as well as destination signs, so something like the Annex would be a destination, or a park, or historic Mystic would be destination signs. So this would be an example of the gateway signs, so these would be those areas where people are coming into the community. We have two, what we're calling, primary gateway signs, the reason why there are two is that depending on the nature of the right-of-way, depending on the nature of the land use adjacent to the roadway, we might have the ability to have a larger, more standard ground-mounted sign with two posts, or we might have to go to something that's a little more of a single post to be able to take advantage of the space that we have available to us. We also have the secondary sign, so this would be sort of in roadways that are not sort of the heavily traveled roads, and what we did, through the help of Susan, we actually looked at the volumes of traffic coming into the different roadways in the community, and were able to very quickly establish where the primary points were, secondary and tertiary were. So on the tertiary would be more like a granite bound that has the compass rose, has the Groton name on it, the bottom right-hand side, it's something that would go into the, sort of the more rural roadways that are gateways into the community. And then, of course, when you're coming into Groton from, in Mystic, coming over the bridge, is really not a great place to put a sign, there's really no place to put your standard sign, so what we came up with was a blade, if you will, almost like a banner, that could be mounted on the ornamental light, so when you first come over, there's an ornamental light, and this could be hung off of the ornamental light to give you that ability to have a gateway sign there as well. And then the system has a series of different directional signs, so there's a series of vehicular directional signs, which are the predominant sign type that you'd see if you're driving around. that you'd see if you're driving around the community as far as being able to orient yourself to where you're going and how to get there. And then there are pedestrian level signs, which are primarily would be found in areas where you'd be walking around. Mystic would be probably the best example of that. And then the destination signs. So police station, the annex here, and other locations that the master plan identifies a series of locations where you'd have these signs so that it's part of an overarching plan so that it's not necessarily just wayfinding. As someone's driving around town, not looking to go in any particular location, they can pass these signs and know that it's part of a larger system. And that system in its entirety helps to give that community identity and really start to define, as part of the system, the signage system, the character of the community through the signage system itself. And then informational kiosks, signs that are meant to be more pedestrian-oriented that could give a context of a larger area. So if you're looking at one of the two, say, the one on the left, the left, which is a ground-mounted one, you'd have an overarching map. That would be the map on the right that would give the sense of the entire community. And then maybe a close-up of what kinds of things in that particular location would be the points of interest. And we've been talking about whether or not these could be touchscreens or how they would be activated. That's still being worked out, but we basically have two types. The ground-mounted on the left-hand side and one that could possibly be mounted on a building so that you could, again, when you're looking at space being limited, having the ability to possibly mount it on a building side. So I'd like to do is just give a general sense. Nowadays, people use their phones and GPS systems to navigate around. And this is not meant to replace that because everybody, that's the trend and that's what people generally do. But again, going back to that, creating a certain community identity and creating a sense of place, one of the things that this does is help to reinforce it. So at this, this is exit eighty-eight, heading northbound. Get off the exit. Part of what we are doing, are doing is coordinating with the DOT. So one of the things that we're looking to coordinate with the DOT on is getting a Groton sign on top of the existing wayfinding sign that's part of the highway system. That then gets you pointed in the right direction as a motorist visiting the community for the first time. And then you turn right and you're heading down one seventeen and you come along to a welcome to sign. Then as you're getting close to the intersection, you get to a decision point as somebody coming to the town maybe for the first time or a visitor that comes once or twice a year. You give them the signage information for, so that they can make a decision on where they're supposed to be going at the next intersection. So this is right before the intersection. This would be an example of possibly what a, what the directional sign could look like at this location. And then when you get up to the intersection, people have made the decision, they're in the left or right lane to make a turn, and you have a reinforcement of the community character. And then, say, if you were heading towards the town hall annex, you're heading to, you took a left at the intersection and now you're heading up the hill, getting ready to make another, get to another decision point, and you get the direction for the town hall annex, but you also get the information about historic Mystic Village going straight. You make the turn, you come down the road, you arrive at your destination, town hall annex, and this would be an example of a destination sign. So that's a quick overview of how the system could work. As with any municipal project, there are costs that are associated with it, and this is an estimate that, hard to read, but I wanted to give you a sense of how we broke it down for all the signage elements. But the end of the day, it's a, a master plan that, this is a master planning level estimate of about two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, which includes some removals of existing signs. Part of the project also looked at inventorying your existing wayfinding signage system and gateway signs. Some of them certainly are significant parts of the character of the town that would stay where they are, but some are really a redundant system that might be a little bit confusing that would come down and be replaced by this system. And with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions. Oh, forgot, we have a sample.
So do you want to pass this around?
Sure. That would be great. Thank you. Bless you. So anyone have questions for Mr. Collins?
I'll start it off.
Go ahead. Councilor Franco.
So have we discussed anything, aside from the presentation there, have we discussed anything with the city of Groton to work together to have some kind of uniform sign for all of Groton?
We've had some discussions with the city over the past few months, and they in particular were initially interested in having entryway signs. The way it was described to me is a sign that would say, entering city of Groton. At that time, we asked if, if they were interested in possibly expanding the scope. And I think they're still discussing that, and I believe they're in the middle of it. I think they are interested, but it did not advance to a level where we could include it in the plan, but we would like it to. And in particular, with the new staff that they've had and also the mayor, I think they're very much interested, but we haven't gotten to that level. We're interested in possibly incorporating that within the document.
Okay. Was there a reason we, I know we were using the colors of Groton in the logo, but is there any specific reason we chose the colors, like the blue with the orange stripe? Or is there any reason? Like, is it visually, does it bring attention visually? Is there a reason for those colors, the way they are?
We had a number of different color palettes that we worked with, and this one really seemed to be attention-grabbing and very complimentary. When you started looking at the, the way the text would work on the signs and be able to work with the arrows that direct, it really became something that I think jumped out and worked well with the, the modified compass rose logo and really became something that was both colorful but very simplistic as well.
All right. Thanks. And then, so all the green signs, will those go away?
No.
They'll still be there?
They'd still be there. Yeah, that's part of the system. That's part of one of the things that we're hoping to coordinate with the DOT is to find out first if we can make some modifications and suggestions to that to help reinforce what this system does. And secondly, to see if, as part of their work that they're doing on the ninety-five corridor, if they have any plans to upgrade those signs. And that way, we'd have a little more dialogue with them about how those signs could be incorporated into the larger system. But they, when we're designing a, a wayfinding system, we have to follow certain rules that govern the way signage design works. So some fonts on, say, the vehicular signs, the directional signs have, they're, they basically have to conform to what the DOT reference manual is, the manual on uniform traffic control devices, if I got that right. And so there are some things that we have to do to stay within those boundaries, and part of it is the existing state wayfinding signs would stay in place. In some places, we could possibly replace them, but we haven't got to that level of discussion with them.
All right. Because I, I can foresee there being an issue with us having wayfair signs, I mean, wayfinding signs, and then the green signs, and it seems sort of redundant at some point.
There is some flexibility. Without having had a good discussion with them yet, we're not exactly sure what that flexibility is.
All right. Thank you.
Councilor Zepari and then Baumgartner.
Question is, you say this is going to cost two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. That's your estimate. When will you need that money?
So we're, we will be presenting to you in the next CIP, a project to be doing this. So we wanted to introduce this plan to you. So we got, we received funding, I believe, two years ago to work on this plan or a year and a half ago. We've been working on this plan for some time. This is the plan. The implementation of that would then be through a CIP project to request the funding. So we wanted to first introduce the idea, make sure people liked the idea, before we then started asking for money to actually implement the project.
So we'll hear about that during the budget season?
You got it. Well, you're hearing about it a little bit now to whet your appetite.
About the request for money?
Yes.
Okay. And how many signs actually are going up? I know there's a, there's a lot of detail in the material, but I didn't sit there and count them.
You know, off the top of my head, I'd have to guess because I don't know off the top of my head, but probably if you look townwide, including, say, the bollards and some of the parking and the destination signs, it's probably got to be about a total of seventy signs or so?
Seventy signs.
Yeah.
There's seventy-two now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilor Baumgartner and then Schmidt.
First and foremost, thanks so much for your work on this. Just an aside, typically with these design concepts, you'll have cardboard cutouts of, you know, folks who don't even exist, but it's nice to see a local resident, Bill Smith, featured prominently, making a cameo appearance in one of the slide presentations. But nonetheless, just about coordinating with maybe some other groups who've put together, put together conceptual plans for their signage. I know the Thames River Heritage Park, a couple of years back when they were really hitting the ground running and getting the park established, put out a couple designs of their signage for the park. And I wasn't sure if maybe there could be a relationship with, with that signage or if there are any conversations with them as well to see maybe how they fit in.
It's interesting that when, sometimes we initiate an idea like this, we're not sure how it's going to end up. And what we've found with this particular initiative, since we've advanced it so far, we've had a number of interests that actually reach out to us and say, how, how can we work with you? Or do you know a contractor that's doing some great signage? The Thames River Heritage Park actually reached out two weeks ago. I believe I meet with her tomorrow. And she asked about our experience with this and do we have a contractor? And I said, yes, and let me show you the plan. So that's the purpose of our meeting. Likewise, we've had some informal conversations with Stonington, and then I previously mentioned the city. So I think we'd like to think that this is evolving and we would like more partners. And the important thing is their signage does not need to be identical to ours. The key word is complimentary. So we're looking to have somewhat of a unified identity for people that come to the area or even for our residents, but I believe there is room to grow and to allow this to evolve and bring more partners in.
Great. Thank you.
Councilor Schmidt.
Well, I like the signs. I think that the font for the type is very, very good. It's very legible and very readable. The only thing, the state does have a certain color for the historic attractions that we have in Connecticut. And I wondered if you would consider using that same color, you know, instead of a blue, use that color so that people could identify with that when they come off the highway.
Yeah, there's a decision to not do that. And one of the reasons why is to make sure, in the signage system that the state uses, all states generally, is the brown for, not just historic, but different types of features that they might be directing you to. So we don't want to be confusing the motorists that this is part of a state system, that this is a distinct system for the community. So we generally, when we've done wayfinding signs in other communities, is to be able to come up with, and there's only, there's certain color ranges that we can work in as far as, for meeting the DOT's requirements. But when it comes down to it, we're trying to make sure that this signage system is distinctive from the state's signage system because at the end of the day, it's about what is saying this is about Groton. So the color scheme is meant to be distinctive for that reason.
It may be confusing to people if they see the brown sign on the highway and then they come off and they don't find that anymore.
Yeah, they, it's meant to be, it's meant to be a complimentary system. So it's, so if the brown sign is telling you to, say, go to the art museum, for instance, this signage system is picking up on that because what ends up happening is there aren't that many brown signs once you get off of the highway on the other secondary roads. And so if somebody's looking to get to the art museum, then we're picking up with the wayfinding system. So part of a larger system, the welcome to signs, the directional signs, it's meant to be that unified system.
If I could add to that, one of the things that I had failed to mention to date was the timing of this. Beyond the market analysis that talked about branding and identity, coincidentally, around the same time, the state had allocated federal dollars for signage improvements along I-95. And I don't have the exact number, but my recollection was that that total project was over five million dollars. Again, it went from, I believe, New London all the way to the Rhode Island state line. All of the stanchions, some of the concrete work, new signage, you probably saw that work taking place. And I think they're still installing some of that. So we believed it was an ideal opportunity to kind of pick up on this, if you, if you kind of consider the signage on I-95 to be more large-scale directional, what better time than to try to align our localized, unique, specialized signage to basically complement what's happening on, on the federal interstate?
Thank you.
Councilor Oberg.
What would your suggestion be? Some of our areas now, we have additional signs, the Episcopal Church, the Rotary, you know, whatever. How would we accommodate that? Would we create some regulation for those signs in order to have it look a little better than it does now?
Well, I think there's a couple of things that are happening. One, we have our zoning regulations, which prescribe how new signage or how signage are replaced for businesses, churches, things along those lines. Then there's also the town's wayfinding signage program, there's state signage. So, and then there's also not only the town's wayfinding signage, there's also, as part of that, just, you know, I think you saw the pictures of, whether it's the town hall annex, the cop property, other parks and recreation, school facilities. So over time, how do we integrate this into a larger program? So that's the mark of, here's how you get around Groton, or that's the, oh, that's a Groton municipal type of use. So those are the things we'd be looking at. We can't control all of the signage. We can partner and work with folks as best as we can through this.
Okay.
Some signs we're stuck with.
Just a post note. Many years ago, when I was on the zoning in the city, they approved a sign to go between the bridges to welcome people to Groton. And I expect that still stands. So I don't know, but there actually is a place there where you could put a sign for what it's worth.
I think the, the important thing to consider with this master plan is it outlines design, colors, location, but it's not set in stone. Similar to our desire to attract other partners with their needs, there'll be additional design needs as we get into the implementation. And I believe as we move this along, we'll, we'll look at locations like that.
I just figured I'd mention it so you.
The submarine, you know, we, we had some thoughts about the submarine, how possibly we can make some improvements to that as well. So I think some of these things are going to require a little bit more consideration, and we're still very much open to ideas.
Well, personally, I think that the presentation was excellent and I want to thank Bill as well, Bill Smith, for a long time ago, being interested in doing something like this. And I'm sure he coordinated with you as time went on. But I think it's a wonderful asset for the town and the city and whomever else might like to be part of it, but it's really going to make us stand out.
Councilor Atwater and then Zepari.
Two questions. One, the guarantee and the longevity of the sign before the paint peels off or whatever and so forth.
We haven't got into the exact specifications, but generally speaking, a lot of these signs are, say, they're about a fifteen to twenty-year sign.
Okay. And then you've done a nice job on the backside, or at least you've talked about it. Is there any possibility that on the lower part of that, you could have donated by the Atwater family or in other... Atwater family, or in other words, some fundraising way, like they do with the bricks in the library and so forth?
I don't see why not. If it were on the backside, I think.
Yeah, I don't think it should be on the front, but just as a little. It's just a way to raise money, is all I'm thinking.
Councilor Zepper?
Who will be manufacturing the signs?
Well, what would end up happening is, construction documents would be prepared, and then the project would be put out to bid. So at this moment, we wouldn't, we don't know who would be manufacturing them, but it would be a contractor that would be probably partnering with a sign fabricator that does that type of work. We'd probably have performance guidelines within the specifications to make sure that we were getting the right people to do the work.
Have we consulted anyone else to look at the problem of, or to look at the issue of signage in Groton? To explore design and locations for its signs?
In terms of this level of detail and comprehensive nature, not necessarily. We have reached out and had conversations with different individuals about their ideas, but in terms of developing the plan, we haven't necessarily reached out to individuals regarding that.
I just did, got my calculator out and did some simple division. Seventy-two signs with a total of $267,000 comes out to about $3,700 per sign. Is that typical?
That seems cheap, actually.
Yeah, I mean, I think what you'll find is that the sign, depending on the size, probably range from about $9,000 to the smaller ones, down to, say, just a few thousand dollars. We just recently, well, the city of Framingham, Massachusetts, just recently put some signs in. They were probably more like the secondary gateway sign. That was, I think, installed probably about, just shy of $2,000. And then they put in a larger gateway sign, one on the left, and I believe that one was somewhere, well, it had granite support posts. I believe that one was about $12,000. So there's a range. The size, the size of the sign will really depend, and there's a very significant range of sizes.
So.
I think what Councilor Zepper is wanting is for you to explore more.
So what we're looking at tonight is recommending a resolution to accept the plan. We're not looking at allocating any funding at this time, and so just, I'd like us to keep that in mind. And Mr. Reiner has already said they would be coming back to us with potential CIP, if it makes it through the manager, through his first cut of things. I'm not done. And I just want everybody to kind of keep in mind, this is just big concepts at this point, and we're not getting into any particular funding, any particular citing, anything. It's just really broad right now, so just to keep that, keep that in mind. So Councilor Parker has not spoken yet.
So potentially, you've talked to the city, you've talked to, you're talking to someone tomorrow, so decision has to be made tonight about accepting the plan?
I'm going to step in, then you tell me if I'm incorrect or not. This is a resolution that we'll be voting on at the town council meeting, but this is just for the overall big concept of what we're looking at. It doesn't necessarily mean it's going to look exactly like this. It's the, I don't know what other words to use except concept. Do you have anything you'd like to?
Well, I. But if we wanted, if they were going to try to put in for any kind of CIP, you know, that starts, we need that in January, so there is kind of a timeline on it.
I get that, but then, looking at some other places that they have listed, I just want to make sure that we've gotten everybody, the places that you've listed on one of these, what page was that? Involved, like, you have potentially a sign for Yukon Avery Point. I mean, have you talked to everyone to see if they were interested in maybe participating, or they want a change of the look of the signs? Because I know, like, it was mentioned, certain state signs are in certain colors. So are we going to just be putting signs up to actually, if the state signs can't come down, we'll have two signs up? I just, redundancy.
I think it's important to realize that basically this is a concept plan, and it's stated as a master plan, but we've not yet moved into implementation. We did have conversations with individuals. We had an internal group that involved some community individuals, and as others come to the table and want to know, "Hey, how do we expand this?", we're very much willing to incorporate. But we didn't necessarily reach out to individual entities or property owners and try to find out if they want a sign at that exact location. And I think we're willing to add more, we're willing, where there's an issue where it may not go, it may not be suitable, maybe a sign doesn't go in at that location. But I think this is a starting point that would advance this concept to the next level, where we can go in the field and actually start trying to find out, do we need to make any modifications before we move forward and try to implement the plan?
If that's the case, if others want to get involved, or, like you said, it could be, it could be changed, would the pricing go up more? Because maybe they won't have the same colors that they want with us, too? Will some people not get involved in it and not, don't want a sign there? So do, does that mean we go ahead and put a sign out anyways?
I don't think so. I think this is, the big list that you have here is the current inventory and potential places where they might go. Nothing is set in stone or in sign at this point. Everything is, everything is up in the air. So we haven't had those conversations about this particular sign is going to go in this exact place at this time. This is just the very beginning, the seed or the infancy of it, for them to flesh out and determine, have those conversations with people, and determine what is the best way to go with these things. So we, okay, there's a matrix, and then there's cost estimates.
To the point of the redundancy of the state signage system, the very first step of the process that we worked through on this project was to do an inventory of the existing wayfinding signage. So when we look at that map that's in your handout, this is meant to be a system that works with that signage system, not to replace it. So, you know, we took into account those locations, what those signs said, and built the system around that. In some places, we'd like to augment that, in some places, we might like to replace some things. But generally speaking, it's meant to be work hand-in-hand with that system, as opposed to be a redundant aspect of that system.
We're also not proposing to, excuse me, go and rip out other property owner's signs. We're not going to go and remove Yukon Avery Point signs. We might have a directional sign that says, "This way to Yukon Avery Point." But whether or not other partners join in on this, that's up to them, if they want to then adopt some of these color schemes or these schematics. We're looking at a signage program, so people inside the town, inside Groton, as well as people external that don't know Groton, so they can get around.
I'm looking at page 19, which would be page 53. Are those, would those be potential areas where signs would go? You have it as a draft, page 19 of the whole program, page 53.
It's the vehicular directional destinations, where you have historic areas, libraries, schools, museums, transportation.
Would those places now have signs, correct? Directional?
So we did, we did, as part of the, looking at the inventory and looking at where decision points were made and what made sense, given what's out there currently, and how motorists need to make decision points, and when those decision points take place, we have made suggestions on approximate locations for the signage system. And part of the reason why we did that is, as I walked you through at the end of the presentation, sort of somebody driving off of 95 and getting, wanting to go to the Town Hall Annex, is an example of how that system would be used. And so we've actually made suggestions on what some of the signage locations likely could be to make it part of an overarching system for both people visiting the community and people within the community.
Councilor Heath hasn't spoken yet.
I like the concept. I think it's brilliant. And I know people have been talking about it for quite a while, and also working on it for a few years, or talking about it for a few years, and you've been working on it for a while. And I would say that in the context of just this, it's great, let's allocate 200 and however many thousands, but when we enter the budget process, I would like to ask that you consider different levels, so that we can fit it into the overall budget and control, like, overall expenses. Maybe break it into a couple of years, kind of thing. That's all.
And I would second that. It's lovely, it's, would be wonderful to have, but it probably will be another tough budget year. And so please keep that in mind as you come forward with us, and even as you're presenting your ideas to Mr. Burt for inclusion in the CIP, please. I think everyone's spoken. Does anybody want another round before we? Councilor Oberg?
I don't know if it would be possible or not, but I think this is phenomenal. I think it would be very good for Groton. But there might be a way that we could make it a public-private entity, where we could get donations, as well as the town contributing to it. And I think that way, because I think people are going to be very interested in doing it. And when you have something like, I know the COP museum has been struggling with people knowing where they are. So somebody like that's probably going to be very excited about having this kind of an opportunity. And I think that there will be places that'll come forward and say they want to be part of it, because they don't have a good signage program right now. So I think that we could look at it that way, and we probably could put together a pretty nice opportunity.
I don't want to be overly optimistic, but we have found most people to be pretty excited about it, and in a very small way. I do know that there are some partners that are willing to step forward and contribute in some way, and not necessarily a couple hundred thousand dollars, but maybe on a sign-by-sign basis in certain locations. I do know that there are some partners that are very excited about this, and for the areas they're interested in, they would be interested in stepping forward.
That's good to hear. Councilor Atwater wants a sign. You get dibs. All right.
Turn it down for one of the $12,000 ones.
Already got notes on it.
All right, is there anybody else who wanted to add anything at this point? So right now, we're looking at a motion to recommend a resolution to accept the wayfaring master plan. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of recommending a resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? So, opposed or abstaining?
Abstaining. I just need more, I need more information from.
Think we should just go ahead and.
Okay, so to clarify, so we have eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, Parker. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you very much, Mr. Collins. I appreciate your coming out and for bringing the sign along with it. Okay, we are on to five. At? 2018, 5/25, Joint Land Use Study Implementation Project Update. This is on page 66. There's no formal action needed at this time. And, Mr. Burt, who do we have? Mr. Reiner's coming back? Excellent. Okay.
Good evening. I'll be brief on this. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. We, the town of Groton, city of Groton, and a number of surrounding municipalities, had worked with the COG about a year and a half ago, the Navy Base, and others, working on a joint land use study, looking at the Navy Base, surrounding land uses, and what things could we do together to work together more in the future to make sure compatibility of uses? We came up with that joint land use study, it's posted on the town's webpage, as well as the COGs and some others in the region. And then the next step, you know, a lot of times, so we talk about a plan, the plan is a plan, then actually implementing the plan costs money, and you have to do things. So the Office of Economic Adjustment, Department of Defense, have funded the development of the joint land use study. They had also indicated that they'd be willing to fund the implementation and study of the recommendations within that plan. So we received, working with the COG, $313,000. The COG received $313,000. They put together a larger scope of work, which, a significant amount of traffic analysis, roadway recommendations, some zone changes, and other transportation studies are going to be conducted within Groton, as well as the larger region. And then a much, a very deep dive into housing, and the housing that's needed within Groton and in the region is part of this study because of the growth that's happening at EV over the next few years. That's something that we don't have a great pulse on, so just wanted to give folks kind of an update on that. I had included the scope of work for the project with the referral. No action is needed at this time by the council, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. Project timeline's about a year, and again, significant amount of recommendations, we expect, as far as transportation analysis over the near future on this, because with all of the growth in housing that we expect, there's also going to be impacts on driving cars, as well as our transit system, bus, and other means of transportation around the town.
Thank you. I know this is interesting. I was able to attend one of the meetings, and Councilor Oberg has attended one, and she's going to be, she's available during the day, so she'll be going to these, and she was very excited about prospects of it.
Yeah, absolutely. If I might?
Yes, and then Councilor Heath.
I think this is another exciting thing that's happening, but I have to say that I think it's, some of this is happening because of the caliber of the staff that we have. COG feels very comfortable with using the expertise of Mr. Reiner, and I think it's a wonderful cooperative situation here, and I think it's a testament to your ability, and I want to thank you for all you're doing with it. Really appreciate it. And I'm sure John does, too.
Councilor Heath?
This actually dovetails beautifully. This is an opportunity for Groton to think big, and we're seeing it come out, is we have, you know, those school properties we're talking about, the signage, and also, I think, this. I was interested particularly in the trails and the safety assessments that were done, because you can create alternative ways to commute to work or across town, or whatever. So that's interesting. Just two, actually three questions, though. Have we considered, or is there funding available for synchronized stoplights to keep traffic moving? Is that something that has been looked into on this?
So, again, depending on the recommendations and actions that come out of this, we would then be looking for funding to actually implement some of the very specific proposals from this. So again, you know, thinking big, thinking long-term, sometimes maybe dreaming a little bit, depending on what happens with new housing development, new commercial development, what happens within our TIF districts, our Tax Increment Financing districts, and new development. As that occurs, we'll be able to use some of that future revenue from those Tax Increment Financing districts to do some of those improvements that we'd like to see, the bike-ped connections, the better transit, transportation connections, improvements to our traffic system, and/or just leveraging some of that work with the state DOT to get work done within the state right-of-way, and, you know, state traffic signals. So that's, nothing is off the table as far as recommendations and how we then take those next steps. So it's, you know, we start big, and then start ratcheting down into getting real, specific recommendations for implementation.
All right. And then, I didn't see anything on here about rail services or tying the airport in. Is that something that we're looking for?
Those are certainly components that we'll be looking at as part of the project. As rail service could be expanded in the future, we're not going to be doing a really, really deep dive into that, but it's something that'll certainly be looked at. I think looking at some of the services that SEAT provides, and if there's ways to expand upon that, and other shuttle services around the community, as well as airport, and as that grows over time, those will all be components of it.
All right, thank you.
Councilor Baumgartner?
Just quickly on SEAT, as many of you know, I'm the. Just quickly on SEAT, as many of you know, I'm the SEAT representative for the town. And right now, there are significant pressures to reduce costs at SEAT to the extent that it could affect services. So that's certainly to keep in mind as we're thinking about expanding transit opportunities for all users, in particular the folks who, the young folks who will be working at EB and the Sub East, which this study is largely built upon with the assumption that there will be such an increase in those workers that we will have to make significant changes to our infrastructure. So that's something to be mindful of when we're deliberating on our own budget, when we're making considerations for appropriations for SEAT, is to keep that in mind, that potential growth. And to also keep in mind about the future vision of transportation here in Groton outside of those issues too. But just a quick question about the phases. What would you say right now is the most important phase from the, from the town's perspective in terms of deliverables? I noticed that they're sort of taking, you know, taking on housing and then taking on transit. But I guess from the town's perspective, I guess what are you looking to see?
A lot of this project is going to be going on concurrently. There's a number of consulting firms that have been brought on, experts in housing and transportation and zoning, transit, specifically looking at bus, shuttle service, bike ped, some economic analysis. I'm the most excited to actually see what comes out of the housing analysis because that's going to give us a really good pulse on what the demand is and what we expect in Groton as well as the region based upon the growth of the EB workforce, the Navy workforce, and then the ancillary and kind of spin-off businesses from that. That's the piece I think is one of the biggest unknowns. We know there's going to be a tremendous increase in the number of jobs as well as new hires because of attrition and retirements at EB. And getting our pulse on that, what that means for the demand in new rental and purchase homes here and in the region, I think is the biggest piece I'm excited about.
I know the Council of Governments completed a housing study. Do you expect any significant differences between this study and perhaps the past study? And if so, what are you hoping to see some of those differences?
There will be significant differences. That analysis they did did not take into account the growth in the EB workforce. So just as the market analysis that we did, we finished that a little bit before EB made the big announcement about jobs. The COG was wrapping up their housing study based, and a lot of the data from that was based on past performance, past growth and trends based off of census data, not this huge outlier of the EB general dynamics workforce growth. So they will take that COG housing analysis that, you know, because the COG is the lead on this project, and use that as a base and then expand upon that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Counselor?
I just want to reiterate again, everybody, I hope you understand that we are so fortunate to have this happening. And it's not costing Groton anything, but we're going to have the benefit of it. So I think it's just a marvelous opportunity. No money, Joe.
So there's no formal action taken at this time. And as I said, Counselor O'Brien will be attending these meetings and she can keep us updated on to progress then.
As this project develops, there'll actually be a project website. There'll be a public outreach portion of it. So people will get involved. We'll be working with the press to help get the word out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a change to the order of items here. I think we have people waiting for, I would like to take 2018-526 Town Property Sale Introduction and set in the public hearing on page 85 next, please. So this is page 85. This is Counselor Schmidt or is Counselors of Perry?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend a resolution introducing the town property sale for a portion of the Noank School Public Garden property, setting the public hearing date of January 2, 2019, and referring the matter to the Planning Commission. I so move.
Moved by Schmidt and seconded by Zep Harry. Is this, are you going to take this?
Yeah, this is, if you look at page 86, you'll see kind of the, compare 86 and 87. On 87, you see sort of that flag shape. That's what the current property owners own. They want to add in to the north, a little section for a garage, is my understanding. It's about .168 of an acre. And we've got the legal description on the last page of this pack, but very similar to the last request we had come through. So this just sets up the public hearing so that we can hear more about it.
Are there any questions for Mr. Burt on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on 2018-526 Town Property Sale Introduction Setting Public Hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? So move unanimously. Thank you. Okay. I believe we're going to have Mr. Bronck come back up to give us a quick introduction before we go to our last item, which is a potential executive session. Do you want to read this when it's time? Not yet, though. Hi again.
Okay, so we're going to talk about two properties in particular and then others as well. Basically, Gold Star Highway, which is 529 Gold Star Highway, process to date, which has been that the town did issue an RFP and we did receive several proposals. We have conducted interviews for that property and basically are having some ongoing discussions with one in particular. And we are at a point to begin sharing details with the council and executive session on that front. The second property is Groton Heights. Similarly, we issued an RFP and had great response on that. The RFP does outline exactly what criteria the projects will be evaluated on. We, similar to past discussions, we used a panel to evaluate and conduct interviews and ultimately are forwarding one developer proposal in particular. And the details from that will be discussed with the council in executive session.
Okay. So if you could just include Mr. Sagami, please. Let me read this. Oh, I'm sorry. Wait one second.
We have some more.
Oh, excellent. There's more. Wait.
We're kind of going in order of priority and little musical chairs. I did want to give an overview of where we are with the Sealy School. So council authorized us to work with a marketing real estate firm, Goman York. We've been working with them for over a month now. They have been reaching out to a number of developers. Next week, they will be at the ICSC conference in New York City promoting the property. And they expect to have a list of developers with a preferred recommended developer for the site to us sometime in the next, I think it was by February. I don't have any specifics yet of the potential uses. I mean, we've talked about some of that in both open and closed sessions over the past number of years of what possible uses could be there. But a lot of that's going to be dictated by the market. The other two properties that we can give a quick update on are the Colonel Ledyard School. I know we've received some questions on that as well as Pleasant Valley School. So Colonel Ledyard School, we're hoping to get keys to that property this week. We, meaning Office of Planning and Development Services, that property, we're just beginning to softly market. We actually have a marketing sheet that we've created for the property. We've been talking and working with the city of Groton. As we all know, that property is located within the city, about some potential uses and process for best getting the word out about that. So very basic marketing sheet that we've put together, happy to share this around with folks about the school, 8.32 acres. There's one building that's about just over 20,000 square feet. And some of the general ideas of what the use could be there, it's still pretty flexible. It may be included within the city's TIF district. So again, just things that are happening. We have not accessed the property yet, but it's something we'll be working on more moving forward. And then Pleasant Valley School, we're still in communication with the school department, hoping to get access to that building and keys sometime in the coming months. I know the town manager has been working with the superintendent on that.
Just to add, I had talked to Dr. Gannier earlier today. He was going to go to the Board of Ed to look at turning over. I've got some questions just on robotics is still there. We have to figure out where that will go. And there's a couple other questions. But at least by the end of the school year, I anticipate having possession of that building. But we could probably show it if we needed to earlier than that.
And as you know and have heard, this is lining up well because as one project is starting to move into one phase, we can then be marketing the next. So we're constantly moving through one into the next. So there's a very linear progression of how we're approaching each one of these properties.
Very good.
I think that's about all we can share in public session right now.
So we have, if we could again hold questions, or do you want to ask?
I want to ask a question that's not involving Groton Heights.
Okay. I don't know if they're going to be able to answer it, but go ahead and ask.
Okay. For future, some of the schools that are going to be empty, such as Lake Butler, can we market these before they actually become empty?
It all depends on, I think, hold on.
Yes. Yes, I've been talking with Dr. Gannier about having quicker access. I want to have a plan in place for, as we know, they're going to be turned over to us that we hit the ground running and get them going immediately.
Right. Because I don't want them to end up falling into disrepair and then having all this other work to be done. And, all right, thank you. I think that's important.
Developers actually are already aware that Pleasant Valley will be coming online to us soon, even though we don't have possession of the property yet. So we've been doing that a little bit, but I'm really encouraged by how the manager and the superintendent have been working together, communicating about how can we develop a more streamlined process for future times when we do receive excess properties.
I had just heard that other towns have done that. While they're, even school is in session, they're still marketing the property knowing it's going to be empty so that when it's empty, it's already, the next process is starting. Thanks.
Okay, Counselor O'Brien, please.
I hereby move with the members of the town council, committee of the whole, town manager, John Burt, manager of economic community development, Paige Bronck, assistant director of planning and development services, Deb Jones, not here, and planning and development service director, John Reiner, and Bob Zuliani, and Susan...
Bob Sagami.
Sagani.
Sagami.
Sagani.
Two separate people.
And Susan Collin. Is that right?
Yes.
Session pursuant to General Statute, Section 1-200, parentheses 6, parentheses D, for the purpose of discussing the lease, sale, or purchase of real estate concerning town-owned properties. I so move.
Moved by O'Brien, seconded by Heed, to move to go into executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? We are in executive session at 9:17.